Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a magi-- this is the special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. It's being held on Thursday, October 6th, at 5:34 PM in our Council of Chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Mel Suid is excused. Mayor Protemana Klein.
Here.
City staff Steven Pocken, City manager Ashley Coronado, City clerk.
Thank you. What we're here for tonight is to do some good things, which is give away some money. But I want to clarify what's we have before us, so everybody's kind of knows what we're up against. So, we have thirty-two applicants for the money, for what we set aside of a hundred thousand, give or take, a little bit more or less. We did a hundred and seven thousand last year. And we have three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in requests. Okay? So, when I started looking at it, I went, "Okay, our wishes are bigger than our wallets, but we'll do our best." And so, there's several ways to look at this. And one is about four-- sixteen of these did not receive any money last year on the requests, so there's sixteen new ones. And then there's some re-dos, or ones that requesting again, that got money last year. So, we can look at it as, what do we do with the new requests versus the re-requests, you know, the-- based on what they received. So, I'm gonna throw it to council right now, so before we get started, I want my preferences that we consider the first seventeen, I believe, that did not request, or were too late to get in last year, and then we'll go in from there. But I'm hoping this-- I'm hoping for suggestions here, so.
Yeah, I would-- I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we should prioritize ones that didn't receive anything last year, and perhaps we could work out a percentage of what we've granted to the people last year, and apply that to the sixteen and take the remaining amount, and spread that out amongst the ones that got money last year.
Okay. Joni, what's your opinion?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree as well.
All right. Well, that was simple. We're moving, yay! So, I'll tell you what I did, was I figured, you know what? We gave a hundred and seven thousand last year, so I took the number of applicants that we did last year, which were twenty-one. We had twenty-one last year, there's thirty-two this year. I took those twenty-one that we supplied, that we gave the hundred and seven to, and just on an average, what did we give everybody as an average? I mean, we-- everybody got something different, best on their needs, but on an average, it came up to about five thousand one hundred dollars a request. So, if we took that five thousand, more or less, and tightened it by the fifteen or seventeen that are requesting, hadn't gotten it last year, that would be, our target goal for the first seventeen would be around seventy thousand dollars. Okay? Yeah. So, the second half of the people would get about thirty thousand, and that's the way I-- the only way I can figure out, how do I treat the first-- these next requests the same as I treated the last? And so, that's a goal, doesn't mean we're tied to it, but that's what I was shooting for when I did my numbers, when I put them in. Now, besides, we all took polls, and we all put our preference, or our-- we shouldn't say preferences, we rated each one of the applications, read all thirty-two of them, what they were, their importance, and the six questions, and then we gave them a score, and this is the tally sheet. And so, they're scored from number one through number thirty-two, and there's a percentage of what their score was, based on what all seven of us thought was-- had the best application, and what would do most for the city. So, what I've done from that list is now I've taken the seventeen that didn't get any money last year, and those are the first ones we're gonna roll through, and then we'll come back, starting at the top again, and come down. So, does that make sense to everybody? So, if you just look at your list right here, we have the first one that didn't receive any money last year, but received a highest rating, was the Bisbee Community Coaster Race. That was number-- they scored number seven overall. All right, so, do you have others?
Mr. Budge, do you have any more?
I was one short. I apologize.
No, that's okay, always.
I have it electronically, if anybody has, you want me to yell? I'm sending it to you right now.
Okay. So, as I come down, so for the coaster races, they asked for five thousand dollars. They ranked very high on the list, so my recommendation is four thousand, since they're one of the highest ranking on the list. What does everyone feel? Just, I mean, let's just open this up, I'm not gonna run this whole thing and decide all the numbers. I don't want--
Come on, come on.
But that was my suggestion, but what-- whatever, oh, you think?
Well, I think that sounds appropriate, in the words, they didn't get any money last year, and they're gonna get up and running this year.
That's about what our average was last year, what we-- the middle-- the higher level ones got last year. I have the list here somewhere, so that's a-- that was kind of the average of the higher rankings. Speak up, so I don't have to recognize everybody, if everybody has another idea.
I think--
So, we're looking for four thousand there, okay? Next one down will be, was number nine, that's the Boys and Girls Club, is ranked next highest.
Are you gonna discuss them all, or are you gonna take motions now?
We're gonna-- I'm gonna just put all the numbers in and take one final motion, if we can.
That's fine.
And if you have a little calculator over there--
I will keep track, yes.
Okay, that would help. Yeah. Instead of us, thirty-two motions.
Yep. Oh, come on, you're no fun.
I don't have much voice left, but, okay. So, number two would be the Boys and Girls Club, they ranked seventy-two out of the possible-- that's the next highest one down. So, what's everybody feel? Their request was--
Seven questions.
Well, their request was for thirty thousand. Now, that's a--
Joni's got a question.
Yeah?
Yeah, so, this list, the one that I have right here, is it all of them, and you're just picking the-- I'm confused how you have one guess.
Okay, so, this is all of them.
Right.
And what I did is I marked up the seventeen that didn't get any last year, so we're going through the first--
Okay, I just found that one, okay, that's--
We're going through ones that didn't get any last year.
So, we're working our way down, and our goal is not to go anything much over seventy thousand. That was a little less, so we have more left over afterwards, so what would your--
What was our percentage divided into the thirty thousand?
Well, I'll be honest with you, I tried to do that this year, and because we have requests of fifty thousand, and thirty thousand, and twenty thousand, that didn't-- wasn't that high last year.
Yeah.
The percentages are, yeah, somebody requested a four thousand, I'm not gonna cut them in half, and then, but yet, the fifty thousand cut it out. It would-- that would eat up too much of our overall. So, the percentage didn't work as well this year, and I'll be quite honest, it's because the requests are so much larger, so instead, I'm just trying to go by what everybody thinks out of the-- out of the thirty thousand that they requested.
I think, I mean, we know that everybody's needs are great, but I think that's a little excessive, and, I mean, I would like to see us do kind of like what we did last time, to make it a little more fair for everybody's, to keep everybody in that four, five, thousand dollar range.
Right. I think, you know, the ones that rank higher and have maybe bigger needs, we could go more, I have a few places that are five and six thousand, you know, overall, but, you know, they service a lot more people, say, than one of the other groups for five, so I'm willing to go a little more than what's everybody feel. I'm sticking more around the eight thousand.
So, when we-- when we-- I wasn't here during this first one. When you allocate or award to businesses money towards their requests, do you take into consideration if they have any other resources that they can tap into, or this is just what we give them, and then they are fully responsible for making up the difference?
Well, on the poll that we send out for every one of these, that was included in one of the ranking numbers. Have you received any other--
Correct.
--financial money, and is this required in order to keep you going as a nonprofit? So, I think that got ranked into the rankings from all of us, so I think that's the best way I could answer that, is--
It's already fact, yeah.
It's already fact of it, okay.
And they rank as seventy-two percent, so.
Well, I think eight thousand sounds reasonable.
I also look at how many people they-- how many citizens they serve versus, you know, others, that's all part of it. And let's move along, next one would be Friends of the Bisbee Pool. They ranked the seventy-one, they're fifth on the list of thirty-two. So, the Bisbee Pool, I've got too many-- they requested five thousand, and so, what do--
I would say four thousand for them.
Okay. It's, again, it's a reasonable five thousand dollar request, it's not one we have to cut too much, I don't know. Everybody else? You're okay?
Okay.
I have that as mine. I go by a per vote also.
People, you'll only use that pool.
Yeah, we did put a-- we did spend a lot of money this year, and we did the whole debt with this money, so that was, but that doesn't keep the light going, so keep your feet, feet in good shape. Okay. Moving down, the next one is Step Up Bisbee Knocker. So, I think they were one of the twenty thousand dollar requests, again, probably one of the higher level ones. They do offer services to a lot of-- a lot of our people in town, so, not quite as high as the Boys and Girls Club was, but any suggestions from the Step Up Bisbee?
Maybe six?
Yeah, I-- again, I would probably go seven, because--
Six?
Yeah. I mean, I think, again, I'm just looking at my numbers, I think we're gonna be coming in under sixty-eight if we take seventy thousand. If that's seven, sound about right for them?
Yeah.
Again, any on them?
They do a whole work.
Yeah. All right. Here we go. And then the la-- next one will be number eight on the request, which is Hope and Beyond Food Pantry. They lost three of sixty-nine. So, their request was seven thousand five hundred. Not by their-- I don't know exactly how many they serve overall, but it's a very good cause, so I'm looking about three, around that, something in that order. Eight, eight, speak up, because we have to be honest, I know nobody wants to put numbers, I hate putting numbers on things.
About thirty-five.
That's okay with me, if everybody agrees, I think that--
Thirty-five?
That's in my ballpark. If I could read my writing on this as well, then. Okay. Moving forward, let's move along, the Friends of the Warren Ballpark. They rated also a six for sixty-eight. They put in--
Ten thousand.
Yep, ten thousand, so that was for a lot of the projects they have going on out there. Then, suggestions?
I think it should be, or they stepped with Step Up Knocker, because the facility that they-- that they are in charge of benefits the whole town in many, many aspects. You know, it benefits the school, it benefits nonprofit organizations, because they utilize the park, so I think it should be higher up as far as monetary go. So, what did you say, Joni? What did they ask for?
Seven.
That.
Uh?
They asked for ten?
Mm-hmm.
I would say, low is seven, at least eight.
I have seven as mine.
Okay, seven.
Seven, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Gentlemen.
Oh, I love the audience. All those DDI's being on there. Guys, this is all a good thing, and I think everybody's gonna appreciate whatever we can give anybody, and so I just hope everybody keeps that in mind, so. All right, let's move on, we have under ten, which is Bisbee Bike Ways. Just to clarify that, we, through their work, they just got us a four and a half million dollar grant for that section around the pit. None of that money goes directly to them, this is so they can continue the process of applying for more grants. So, just, that was one of the questions I had, somebody wrote in, so I wanted to answer that, not justifying it, I just wanted to answer that question, so. Let's see, they put in for ten, so.
Suggestions?
How many other grants have they received?
They get them from the Legacy, I know, and I think of us before, but I know they got several from Legacy, and I think one from Freeport. Freeport. But--
I can address that, Mayor. We've gotten a couple of grants from Legacy, the Arizona Foundation.
And, and one from Freeport.
Yep, and Freeport, yep.
So, they have other grants coming in where a lot of these don't, so I have, I kind of have an issue with this.
Joni, what's your suggestion would be?
Can I address that?
No, we're not taking comments. If we did, it would be thirty-two things would be there until midnight, so, hope you can, okay?
Maybe two, I think.
I have--
It could be more than that, yeah.
Definitely more.
I mean, they're working forward. The kind of standard for me on all these, that's coming around ten or around four, that's what I've been kind of looking at, as the standard for, if you keep that program moving forward, at least.
Yeah, at least four.
I could go for--
All right, seems to be the consensus, four for Bisbee Bike Ways. Moving forward, down a little further is the Bisbee Radio Project. This is ranked at sixty-two, so only a couple of percentages less. There's a very reasonable request of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, that's so they can meet some FCC requirements. I've always, and what we did last time, is anything under five, we just turned it pretty much forward.
Yeah, I would do that, get probably on the air.
Don't make any money off of it.
All right, well, now we're--
Let's talk about--
I don't get any business, okay, now let's do it. It's an emergency. I'm volunteering.
Now, I'm thinking of giving five dollars.
I'm volunteering.
Say, may I clarify that, it's not to keep Joni on the air, it's to create an emergency alert system.
Yeah, that's--
Yeah. No, I thought she was, we did, but it's--
No, that's why we have emergency alerts.
Joni's having a bee, bee, bee. All right, thirty-two fifty. Hope I'm not-- you're keeping up with me.
I'm keeping up with you, we're good, we're good.
You're so good, okay. All right, we got just a few more to go through here. The next one is the Arizona Rangers. As you know, they do a lot of work for us at different events, for, you know, service a lot of nonprofits when they put on events. Their request was for seven thousand and forty-nine dollars, I guess for radios and other things that can make them feel more efficient, so. I don't think we'll go quite that much, but any suggestions?
See, now, I'd almost like to keep them at their request, because anytime we have any kind of emergency, they're the first ones there. And, I mean, they, you know, they block out roads, they keep people out, I mean, they were really great help on the Saginaw Fire, but it's for anything, I mean, it could be the Fourth of July parade, they are always there, and we know that we have, you know, we're short on our police officers, and they go after all this, and I think they do a great job for the city. They also benefit the school district in many ways. When we don't have police officers for games and such, they're there, they're there for dances a lot of times, I mean, so they, they benefit the city, they benefit our schools, and any other events, I've always seen, any event, the Blues Festival, I saw one.
Let's go, how about seven thousand, since that's the largest one we've given out so far, all the way alone? Would that, that'd only be a five hundred dollar, if, I'm sure.
Seven.
Well, they are asking for seven thousand forty-nine, so we're--
Oh.
Forty-nine?
Oh, I'm down here.
It's not seventy-four, it's not.
I'm looking at seventy-five, okay, my numbers are, that's beyond the--
But, I mean, I'm okay with it, if you want to round it off to seven thousand, that's it.
Yeah, forty-nine's kind of--
That's good. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Forty-hundred and twenty-three cents.
I don't have to keep all that, yeah.
All right, my his artist, all right, here we go. Then we move down to, the next one would be the Bisbee Fiber Arts Guild, they're at fifty-nine percent. Their request is for eleven thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's a pretty large amount, I think.
I think they did a good job of just applying the amount of money that they needed, but I would, maybe after four thousand?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's kind of figuring, we've been working with them.
Yeah, I think four would be good for me, sounds great.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. It hits my, my goal numbers over here.
You said four thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, we get down to the Bisbee High School, they didn't rank forty-nine percent, but they are requesting fifty-five forty-two, another dollar, I mean, it's large.
That's close to five.
Right. What I have is forty-five fifty, just because everybody took some hit below five, I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Forty-five fifty?
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Okay. We got one, two, three, four, let, okay. Next one is Cochise Harm Reduction. This is, what's the number, twelve? They're requesting fifteen thousand dollars, which should be a little much for that, and I mean, one of the--
Wait, who's twenty-nine?
Cochise Harm Reduction.
Twelve on the questions.
Yeah. Um, I'm not really, I mean, I read their, they didn't score as high as the rest of them, don't know exactly why, but we have it all over there, everyone can see it, but again, I wouldn't do much more than four, but we're averaging on everybody else.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah. Okay with that one? Four. Um, then we have the Bisbee Cochise Tenant Union, right down in the forty-five percent range. Their request--
Nine thousand.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I, um, of all, all of these in the application, were they, I don't remember, so, in late night, were they required to show their proof of non-profit status?
They were asked, but they weren't, they weren't, they didn't have it proven. I did look, the ones I didn't go up, on the Corporate Commission, and I found two that didn't actually show, but one of them works under, I believe--
Bisbee Pride.
Bisbee--
Pride.
Pride.
And this is the one?
Yeah, and this one is the one that works on Bisbee Pride. The other, one of the other ones, like the Community Pool, is not, but they noticed that on their, their community group, so, so this works underneath the, um, I--
Four?
I'm looking more like three, because I don't know exactly how many, but, it's everybody to their own.
There is a question on this paper about who decides the distribution of money to the citizens, that's basically, that's what I'm--
Right. I'm not really, since I don't know about the board, and exactly how it all works, and I don't expect people to come, tell me tonight, but what I wanna do is, I'd like to see some of the, what accomplishments that they have, or what they're exactly doing, and so, I mean, I have, I have a three on that one, but, well, whatever it is.
That works.
Okay. We're getting down into the lower ranked ones, so I'm cutting more on the lower ranked ones than the upper ones. Next one is the Project Wildlife, that is asking for three thousand and forty dollars, that's for the project to add a bunch of plants across all of our parks and--
Did we forget the community one?
That, that--
That's a second, ten requests.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, they got put in the wrong.
Okay.
They were some, they'll come up next. So, Wildlife, they put in for three thousand forty, again, I'd do three, just to, you know, round it off to an even. Okay. Make it easier for our poor finance director. Okay. And then, the last two that came in was the Binational Arts Institute, which, what did they ask for? Do you have, how's that number? Five? They, like I said, ranked, the next two are the lowest ranked, forty-two, and the next one's thirty-seven, so, like I said, I make a bigger cut on those, but--
Two thousand?
That's, that's what I have, yeah. And finally, Premier Alliance, they're looking for ten, aren't they?
Yes.
I mean, all, what they're doing out there is great, but they get a lot of money elsewhere too.
They do.
So, I wouldn't hold much worth of two either.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, they got two?
Two.
Okay, and the one above it, I'm sorry, five?
Two.
Thank you.
So, can we get a total now?
Mm-hmm. Okay, let's see, where did I leave?
Shut my phone off. I would have, okay, later.
Okay, clear.
Three? Three, uh, three. I forgot one.
You're faster than me.
No, no, I was guessing.
Seventy thousand three hundred.
Well, I hit seventy was our goal. All right, seventy thousand three hundred. All right, so, with that in mind, people, over the next, let's see, we got fifteen, sixteen programs left, so. We got fifteen, sixteen of them, why do we have, so. I think about, a lot of those will be four and twos and.
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, we've got about thirty to thirty-five.
Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred. Your goal's a hundred.
We always went over a little last time, that's just. So, let's keep that in mind, and if we, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna mark these off to the side, and then.
I'll keep a running total.
Well, and then, when we get up to there, we might have to make adjustments, that's.
Sounds good.
Does that sound reasonable, people? We might say, oh, we like this, 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 and all of a sudden, well, we don't have anything to give anybody else.
Well, if we divide the sixteen into the thirty, let's say, just for a figure to start with.
One thousand eight hundred and seventy-five.
On an average.
On an average, yeah.
To be honest with you, those, the, the last requests came in at a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the, for these last sixteen, so. That's what they're, that's what the requests were, so we're gonna have to be a little more diligent on this one. So probably, I think what we should be doing is looking about half of what we've been giving, so four thousand dollar ones would be two thousand, and. Two thousand dollar ones would be one thousand, and so on, that's about how we're gonna have to get around thirty, that's my suggestion, so. But again, so we'll start with the, with the highest ranked, and the very highest ranked was Central School Project, at eighty-one, eighty-one percent ranking. And they were requesting a very big, huge fifteen hundred dollars. Kind of easy, isn't it? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I recall they were very reasonable last year, too.
Yeah, they were, they were under five last year. Okay, we'll put that off the side, next one will be the Bisbee Coalition for the Homeless, also ranked very high. Their request was ten thousand. A lot of our ten thousand dollar requests, we gave seven, so I think we'd have to hold this one to three more. Somebody say.
I'd say three. We've got much to do here.
Okay, well, we'll mark that at three. The next one, ranked high, was seventy-seven percent, was the Healthy Bisbee, or basically the Grove Park benches, and they requested five thousand. Again, for the first round, we could, we could do four, but I think it'd be more like.
Two fifty?
Two, everything that was four before would be two this time.
Two thousand.
They, they did receive three something last year.
I'm sorry, Grove Park was two?
Next one is ranked high, seventy-six percent, was sent to the Bisbee Animal Shelter. They requested fifteen, and they got seven thousand last year. So, again, I'm looking at three or four.
Three or four?
Number seventy-four. They, they're, they're asking for fifteen, they got seven last year. So.
I'd say four.
They're ranking higher, so they would be.
We still got a number to do, though.
Why don't we do thirty-five on it, that way we come between the two of us, thirty-five on it, and we can make these adjustments down, and we'll put a question mark on that. Next one is the Bisbee Seniors Association, ranked at seventy-four, and they're requesting thirty-seven thousand, so.
I'm sorry, which number was that?
That was twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Number twenty-six. I would like to fund their chairs, but they're expensive chairs.
Yeah, look at this.
But again, this rank higher, it would be another one of those thirty-five to four thousand, I mean, that's. And as we get down, we'll, they'll be a little lower stake, because they're, I don't want to rank them over, but.
Um, Mayor, just, the first bullet point, roof leaks that need to be replaced, we have a contract with a roofing company to replace the roof right now?
That's correct.
Right.
And also, that's, we need some painting and replace some carpeting, and once the roof is replaced, any place where the drywall has been damaged will also be replaced.
Any.
Two, three.
Well, they've got a lot, but they've got a lot of work on it.
They got a lot of this money to start with, but. Let's, let's see where two comes, and if we can raise it up later, we can do that.
I'm just gonna suggest something here, since this is a city-owned building.
Yeah.
Maintenance, repairs, replacements are really the city's responsibility, and.
Right.
They're tenants, they don't own the place.
Right.
So, anything on this list that has to do with building replacements or improvements, that's, that's general fund money.
Right, so I was looking at chairs, that's why I said chair.
Right.
When I was eight thousand, they wanted for chairs, so. So that's, that's the only one I was thinking about, that would've been the request, and I don't know.
Get the chairs and we can have some of these.
Okay, moving on.
I've got a group now, whole city, all, whole bunch of these.
Alright, we have, we have two, this is, this is for nonprofits, alright, we're, we're gonna move on now to number eighteen, which is the. Two thousand, yeah, yeah, same pass. They requested five thousand, so.
And this is.
That's definitely faulty.
For food, it provides to the pantry.
Yeah, last year they asked for a receipt of that.
Right. Again, I'm looking at twenty-five hundred or something there.
Three thousand?
I'd go twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Again, we can, we can.
But they do provide meals for our community.
Right.
We can adjust it up or down, depending on what our total comes out at the end, I'll put a question mark plus by that one. Alright.
So what do you think it's a sign?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Help me make sure I don't miss it, next one I have is the Bisbee Wellness Center, that's number twenty-seven, they requested three. I got eighteen hundred last year, this is what I was thinking about. Um, next one is the Bisbee Community Y, now they rank at sixty-three percent, this is number eleven on the list, and the request. Yep, basically fifty thousand, yeah. Alright, so, we're at, this one's gonna have to come right up.
Four?
Four would be maximum, absolutely.
Well, let's go thirty-five.
What did I get on four?
They are number eleven, oh, yeah, eleven, never, they're on the.
I was right. I was right.
I messed up on that one.
So what did we say, thirty-five?
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five? And we'll, we'll, we can adjust that one, too.
Do I have to do some adjusting?
Well, we'll see, I think we're gonna be alright. Alright, next one is the Kiwanis Club, they, this will be number seventeen, so they got, they requested five thousand. They got thirty-eight hundred last year, I'm thinking of them, again, like a two. Next one will be the Bisbee High School Athletics Fund, that's number sixteen on the list, they're requesting ten this year, they got forty-eight hundred last year. Looking at twenty-five hundred this year. Now, why am I have to say the numbers?
Because you want mine.
No, I want you guys. My, my rank is not much.
So it's a twenty-five hundred?
Yeah. We'll look at all these numbers, we'll get a total. Uh, next one is Bisbee Community Corps, that's number twenty-three on the list, they're requesting three, twenty-four hundred last year. Yay! Thank you guys, you feel better now? Like, I'm gonna take a drink of water. That's number twenty-three. Alright, moving on, number twenty-two, this is the Bisbee Science Exploration Research Center, this is item number twenty-two. They're requesting seventeen thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. They got eight thousand last year. So, look at the, the highest one we've given out so far on this list is thirty-five hundred.
About twenty-five.
I think we can, I think we can do three here, because they, they do a lot of the kids' stuff, let's, I'll put a question mark on it, but I think, I think we'll still come out okay. I may be off. Uh, next one will be, item twenty-five, is Bisbee Pride, twenty-five, they're requesting nine, they got thirty-four hundred last year. Ranked at fifty-nine percent of overall ranking, so. This is another one, will probably be two or.
Twenty-five, twenty-five, five?
Twenty-five. Next one is the Bisbee Mining and Historic Museum, this is number nineteen. They're requesting seventeen thousand, but I'm gonna let the city manager speak to this also, this is a city building and everything they're requesting is for city repairs.
I, I think that should be done in the context of the running budget.
Alright, I agree, so let's leave this one for, for. Out for now. I mean, if they, if there was something other than the actual repairs of the building, I'd like to make something else. Moving on, ranked fifty-one percent, fifty-one percent is number twenty-eight, which is Bisbee Bow, requesting seventy-five hundred, they got fifteen hundred last year.
Is it saying fifteen hundred?
That's, yeah, I was gonna suggest that.
Um, yeah, that should, we'll see where that comes out.
I've had a clarification from you, Bisbee Bow, you know?
Fifty-one thousand.
Can you see the seventeen one?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And we have the Bisbee, wow, only one more, Bisbee Bloomers, that will be item, that's number twenty-one, requesting a thousand. We got four last year, let's see what a thousand, let's see what a thousand does this year. No, I just said, let's see what, what I said before, now let's see, I think that's everyone, right?
That is everyone, you're at thirty-three thousand, you were really close.
So that turns out to be a hundred and three thousand and three hundred.
The city manager's budget is good with that?
One oh three thirds.
Let's all have any objections, I'm okay with that.
Three thousand and three hundred over, we can make those adjustments in the YouTube, but we went one oh seven last year, I think we can go one oh three this year. Okay? How does everybody feel, ready for a motion? I appreciate everybody here, I hope. Nobody will twist my arm when I leave. Or my head.
We check to see if everybody's still in the parking lot.
I'll be shutting the lights off.
The chief isn't here today, is he?
I thought I had that on my, you know what, I, I thought I had that in my paperwork, but. I'm just gonna make a motion that we approve. One hundred and three thousand and three hundred dollars has determined during this special session to, to all of the emergency assistant funds that we discussed. We have a motion of second to approve a hundred and three thousand, three hundred dollars to the, out of the emergency assistant funds. Let's do a roll call, since it's so much.
Okay, Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye, motion passes, and I thank everybody, and it's so nice to be able to do something for everybody else, and. We're gonna keep putting away some other things, thank you, everybody, motion to everybody.
I make a motion to, to.
All the voters, somebody saying aye, aye, those make, you're a germ, thank you, everybody.